Can you everybody join me in the pledge of allegiance to start our meeting? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take the roll.
Yes, Alderman Baccador.
Here.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Alderman Patac.
Here.
Alderman Reynolds.
Here.
Alderman Laveri.
Present.
Alderman Jepson.
Present.
Alderman Herndon.
Here.
And Alderman Crane.
He's due his absence, but he'll be joining us in about a minute.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that Alderman Crane can join us electronically.
Motion Alderman Herndon, Samon Thompson, to allow Alderman Crane to join us electronically. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried.
I'll do one more roll call. Alderman Baccador.
Here.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Alderman Patac.
Here.
Alderman Reynolds.
Here.
Alderman Laveri.
Present.
Alderman Jepson.
Present.
Alderman Herndon.
Here.
Alderman Crane. Thank you.
I'd like to open up the meeting with a public comment because this is your time to give me ideas, thoughts, concerns, suggestions. At this point in time, I'm going to give you your allotted time. I will not interrupt you. That's just my personal opinion on this time. Anybody like to join us tonight?
Breann Hicks. With the upcoming election just days away, a lot has been on my mind. I can't help but think about the current state of our city and notice that it's a city that struggles to be honest and transparent with its residents. I see a lot of favoritism and favors, discrimination, and exclusion. What's the most disappointing is that residents such as my dad, my mom, Dawn, and myself just want to see our city improve, grow, and flourish. But the city consistently, consistently leaves our ideas, questions, concerns unanswered and unaddressed. I bring my thoughts to the council at every meeting, but I never receive a response. Why are we being ignored and disregarded when we know these are legitimate concerns? Different views and opinions can bring new solutions to different problems. It's pitiful that the city doesn't want to work with its residents to improve our city together. Here are some instances where I've never received a genuine response to my questions. During several city meetings, I've questioned the community cleanup effort that was to be scheduled for this year. Is it assumed that our city intends to maintain a dirty environment? Another issue that I continue to question is the chicken and duck ordinance. I've brought this up in numerous meetings since September. No one has been able to provide an explanation for the recent change. Some aldermen mentioned receiving complaints, but it was clarified that these individuals were not following the rules. Without any official complaints, no mention at a city meeting, and only one ordinance violation issued, it raises questions about whether this was a personal aversion of a current city council member or a decision made in the best interest of the community and its residents. Can anyone shed any light onto who requested this change to be added to the agenda? Boo, during our last meeting, I mentioned the stoplight, four-way stop on Marquette and First Street. You had stated that the city had voted on this matter some odd years ago to designate it as a four-way stop. Following this meeting, I submitted a FOIA requesting any information related to the specific decision. However, the response I received was that the city is unable to locate any responsive documents, including any meeting minutes or ordinances. Therefore, I'm curious to know who made this decision and why the light was never replaced with a legitimate four-way stop. Another issue I encountered began on February 11th. I sent an email to both Jordan and Boo to inquire about a safety hazard at Matheson Park. The soil around the recently replaced power pole had settled, creating a one-plus-foot drop-off around this perimeter. Jordan informed me that this issue would be addressed in the spring and that he had noticed it several days before my email. Boo acknowledged that he would investigate the matter. However, I never heard anything further about this topic from either one. This past Thursday on March 27th, almost two months after the fact, I sent an email to Amarin regarding the persistent hazard. I received a response on Friday, and by the time I drove by on Sunday, the issue had been resolved. This incident raises concerns about the city's prioritization of safety.
Ms. Hicks, your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak tonight?
Hello, y'all. Deanna Hicks. I just want to wish everybody luck tomorrow for the election, everybody who's running and running against and for reelection. I'm happy to see so many names of people out there, and I want to wish everybody luck. Mayor Grove, you said that us as citizens are your boss and that when you see people like with high grass or whatever, that you will go knock on the door, ask if there's an issue or a problem, and help them resolve it before a ticket is issued. I don't believe this is truth or reality. There are several people who get tickets over and over and over and over and over, and they can't afford to fight them if they feel retaliated against, and they sure can't afford a lawyer. When we vote in the election, I hope you would vote for somebody you trust, somebody who can actually speak for you as your alderman. I want somebody who is going to be a good example and not break ordinances as their example. So I wrote down a few of the ordinance violations that my fourth ward alderman has received. Starting way back in 2015, and he was elected in 2009. Vehicle parked on a non-improved surface. Ticket there that was voided, he didn't have to pay. That was in April of 2015, 7/15. Three vehicles on the grass, all given ordinance violations, didn't have to pay tickets. March of 17, same thing. He's not learning his lesson. Parking complaint, another vehicle, that went to debt collection. May of 2018, another abandoned vehicle. Expired tag, hadn't moved in months, and the owner didn't even reside at the place where the vehicle was left. September of 2020, large branch fell on a sidewalk of a home that he was partly responsible for on Crozet Street. Two vehicles abandoned there. August of 21, abandoned vehicle. August of 22, illegal parking and abandoned vehicle. Now, there was August 5th, on August 31st, and August 27th, same vehicle, three different citations, all sent to debt recovery. May of 2023, abandoned vehicle. 2004, impala, tall grass also at Crozet Street building. June of 2023, tall grass again. June of 2023, again, abandoned vehicle. And October of 2024, car and yard and on Wednesday.
Ms. Hicks, your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to talk tonight? Public comment? Anybody else today? Public comment? Harry and I would like to go move on to the presentation.
A presentation from Rotary Park Foundation.
Mr. Vaskey, Mr. Westerman?
Thank you. I'm Chris Vaskey with Rotary Park Foundation. I'm going to defer to Steve here as I pass out some cards talking about our upcoming festival and a check to the city from last year's festival. Yep, take it away.
Thanks, gentlemen. We won't take much of your time. Basically, this is our ninth year for the Music and Art Festival, and we've had a great time putting that on. This is year it is May 24th and May 25th on our Memorial Day weekend. We've really enjoyed that. We've really enjoyed the help from you, Jeff, and everything, and all you guys that have allowed us to continue to do this here. So basically, we have a check, again, for $5,000 that we are donating to you guys and to the Rotary Park Fund.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Who gets the check?
We appreciate the Rotary Park Foundation, guys, and all the work you put in. And like I said, every bit of money helps that, and it's also a good time to have by all, so it's a win-win. So, and we're looking forward to this next month. Thank you, gentlemen. And as always, just so you know, you can, you don't have to stick around for the meeting. You guys can take off if you'd like. If you want to stay, just don't stay. Oh, they have the special event permit. You probably should stay. Approval of minutes.
Your Honor, make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held March 17, 2025. Please start filing, gentlemen, as a copy.
Motion Alderman Reynolds, Samon Thompson, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Discussion potential action on the following petitions.
Request from LaSalle Rotary Park Foundation for a special event permit to allow the use of city-owned property at Plasky Park from noon to 11:00 p.m. on Saturday, May 24, 2025, and Sunday, May 25, 2025, for LaSalle's Music and Art Festival and related matters.
Your Honor, I move that we request, or grant a request.
Second.
Motion Alderman Patac, Samon Reynolds, please take the roll.
Alderman Baccador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
I'm staying. I'm newly on the board. I haven't even attended a meeting yet.
Jepson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Alderman Crane. Thank you.
City clerk, can we do the next three together, please?
Absolutely. Request for 2025 raffle license from Voluntary Action Center. Request for 2025 raffle license from Help Rachel St. Kaywitz Kick Cancer. Request for 2025 raffle license from LPHS, Foundation for Educational Enrichment and Related Matters.
Your Honor, I move we grant the requests for all three raffle licenses.
Second.
Motion Alderman Jepson, Samon Reynolds, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried.
Request from Mike Pishka Jr. of LaSalle Girls Softball to hold a Tag Day Collection on Friday, May 2, 2025, and Saturday, May 3, 2025, at the intersection of 11th and Buckland Streets and Charters and 24th Streets and related matters.
So on this application here, they have asked for Charters in 24th Street, which you have discussed in the past and have provided them. I did discuss with an alderman about whether or not there are specific intersections that these people are allowed to collect within. I wasn't able to find anything in ordinance yet before the meeting tonight, and I did speak to Jim briefly about this. We can approve the request on the basis that if it does go opposed to some ordinance that I'm unfamiliar with at this time, we can reconsider and discuss with the group. They do have some times that are out of alignment of what the city has approved in the past, and those will be asked to remain in the times that we have set before. So the application does state how many, like the time ranges that they can collect. It does not state the intersections. So we're going to verify that after the fact here, but the times will shift to make sure that they do match the same times we asked of everybody else.
I think in the past, we've changed it to a four-way stop, too. Blinking lights, but let the check.
We have. So we've granted this in the past. Just want to make you aware of it that we are looking to make sure that we're not doing something opposed to what we have previously.
And I'm not for sure, Alderman, or, sorry, W. clerk, if we could even, you know, really police that, because now it's basically anybody can go where they want and ask for stuff. So.
Should sort of discuss that as well, so it may be completely moot. But just make it aware that we did hear the concern and we'll look.
I know, we're just trying to organize the weekend so people aren't double-dipping.
Exactly. That's the main purpose of this.
Does that weekend open then?
Yes.
Awesome. What's the council's pleasure?
Your Honor, I move we grant the request, Mike Pishka Jr. of LaSalle Girls Softball to hold the Tag Days on those dates.
Second.
Motion Alderman Jepson, Samon Thompson? Let's take the roll on that one.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane. Alderman Baccador.
Aye.
And request from Chad Gilbert of Edward Jones for a special event permit to allow the use of city-owned property on the sidewalk in front of 425 First Street for an open house meet and greet event from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Friday, April 11, 2025.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we grant the request from Chad to go ahead and do that, partial use of the sidewalk. Is your solar installed? Thank you. Oh, I'm glad about that.
Second.
Motion Alderman Thompson, Samon Reynolds, please take the roll.
Alderman Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane. Baccador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Reports to city officers. Communications. Bids. Appointments, resignations.
You know, it sounds like Chad wanted to say something there.
Oh.
I didn't want to interrupt.
Yes. Sorry, Chad.
I appreciate the approval. I just wanted to say, it was around eight years ago, I stood in front of the council when I opened my business in downtown LaSalle. So the team looks a little different now. The event next Friday is really to reintroduce ourselves. So I'm still here, but then we welcome Kelly Campbell onto the team, and then we have Daniel Plag with us, too. So.
Awesome.
The team is growing, and thanks again for the approval.
And again, as always, we appreciate you settling in downtown LaSalle. Thank you for your investment. You guys don't have to stick around if you don't want, but if you want to, feel free. Get back to the family. Standing committees.
Okay. Discussion potential action regarding the recommendation of the Streets, Alley's, and Traffic Committee regarding a request from John Alea for accessible pedestrian signals, APS, throughout the city of LaSalle, including the crosswalk of St. Vincent Avenue and Roosevelt Street and related matters.
Your Honor, it is recommended Streets and Alley to table this, and we get more information on the cost and what it's going to cost.
So we're just passing that tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Red discussion, potential action regarding the recommendation of the Streets, Alley's, and Traffic Committee regarding a request from Johannes Bus Service to create a four-way stop intersection at the Sixth and Crozet Streets intersection and related matters.
Your Honor, recommendation, Streets, Alley, Traffic, that we denied the four-way stop, but we're going to put signage up to maybe slow the traffic down and see if that works.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Motion from Alderman Baccador, Chairman, Samon Thompson, to deny the request, but they will be putting some extra signage up there to try to help the situation. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried.
Discussion potential action regarding the recommendation of Streets, Alley's, and Traffic Committee regarding replacing a street light at Fifth and Crozet Streets and related matters.
Your Honor, I went past there on my way down, and it looked like the light's up, unless it was a barrage.
We did reach out to Amarin, and they said they were going to hop on as fast as they could, so it's possible that they put it up today. They didn't reach out to me, but it's possibly put it up today. Correct.
Yeah, they put it up since last meeting, Chairman, so it's good stuff. No special committees tonight, all business.
Authorization of pay request number one from municipal well and pump totaling $277,965.65 for work completed to date on the 2024 water system improvements, deep well drilling project, and related matters.
I move we authorize the pay request number one from municipal well and pump.
Second. Motion Alderman Laveri, Samon Jepson, please take the roll.
Alderman Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane. Baccador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
And that's pretty much for the mobilization and equipment costs. They haven't started actually drilling yet, but they have got the site, they've started to prep the site, and they've mobilized. So that is part of their cost to date, and that will be utilized towards the grant we did receive from USDA.
Thanks, Brian. Joe, any other old business tonight?
Your Honor, I got some old business. The stoplight, I can tell you that the stoplight on Marquette and First Street, Alderman Baccador was an alderman at the time, Alderman Patac was an alderman at the time, Alderman Mabari for sure was an alderman at the time, I was an alderman at the time, and Jeff Grove was the mayor at the time. That was definitely voted on as council floor. Also, my name is Thurl R. Herndon. So defamation of character and slander, I will not run a bad campaign, but it costs a lot of money when you slander somebody and you don't know their real name.
Any other old business? New business?
Your Honor, I just have one thing I'd like to put out. I've gotten calls before in regards to the committees and actually why I stepped down from the council seats during Streets and Alley's, and I want to make everybody aware, we have different committees. Brent, you have extra cards?
We can make cards available.
Okay. Cards are available, so you know what aldermen are assigned to what committees. So if you have a specific question, you can address it to those specific aldermen possibly, but we're not on every committee except for finance. And that was done because it's important, a lot of stuff's important, and we missed the vote one time because maybe I was even gone, but to have all the aldermen present for the finance made sense. But just so everybody understands, there's a lot of committees, you know, fire, police, and there's different chairman, and there's different aldermen, there's some alternates. So I just wanted to clarify that for everybody that attended.
And to reiterate, too, the committees are actually listed on our transparency binder in the lobby as well as on our website.
Thank you very much. So that might narrow down who you want to call on specific issues.
There are 20 different committees.
You counted them, didn't you, Chad?
Yes, I did.
I don't have a card, so I can't say much. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other new business? Discussion potential action on the following additional ordinances and resolutions.
An ordinance related to authorizing a renewal and update of agreement with 120 Water Inc. and matters related thereto.
I move that we approve the ordinance related to authorize renewal and update of the city's agreement, 120 Water Incorporated and related matters.
Yeah, I have a question about this. I thought this was a one-time deal where we were dealing inventory of lead lines. Am I reading that incorrectly?
Yes, we had originally hired them to do that specifically. Kevin had brought this to me and asked if, that he would like to be able to continue this relationship with them. We are currently still in inventory phase, even though the deadline has been passed. We met that deadline, but we still are continuing to look, determine unknown locations, which is going to be a lengthy process, and we're developing strategies in order to do that. 120 Water's been helpful in accumulating the information. Just recently, we worked with them to send out a survey to all the unknown locations to help identify those lead lines. That was one of the, I believe, the last thing that we had under the contract with them previously. So now our contract is due with them, and Kevin expressed that he would like to continue this relationship.
Okay. Many folks are making appointments for that now, correct?
Yes, yeah. They're currently developing timeframes for the water department to make house visits to not only change meters, but also check unknown lines if they had requested that.
I have mine.
And we did the past, authorized overtime, our own guys do that, like at Sarin and stuff with pot-holing, if that's something you want to do in addition to it, you know? That's one thing you're thinking. I was thinking that, too, but I don't know the deal with any of our guys.
Okay.
We had a public hearing regarding lead lines, too, on the 20th of March.
It's council's pleasure.
I did have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion Alderman Laveri, Samon Patac, please take the roll.
Alderman Laveri.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane. Baccador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Do we have no need for executive session tonight? Approval of bills?
Total submitted, $786,547.16.
Your Honor, I move that we accept, pay, file each bill as each and every alderman have the right.
Second.
Motion Alderman Patac, Samon Laveri, to pay the bills, please take the roll.
Alderman Jepson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane. Baccador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Patac.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Motion for adjournment.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Motion, I'm sorry. Hold on, Alderman Crane, what I have, Chief of Justice, you want to speak a minute? Chief?
I just want to make mention and throw some kudos out there. Out there yesterday, we, obviously, I'm sure everybody knows, we had a, it's a situation that in my almost 30 years as a police officer, it's probably one of the worst calls I've ever had to attend to, let alone when you pull up on a situation like this. I can say that we're fortunate in this area. I was at home yesterday, trying to enjoy the Sunday, and my phone started going off about a building that had a wall fall down, hit some cars, and I thought it was a little strange. And after that call, I got another call about somebody that drove into a building intentionally, which was very alarming, and that led to, within another minute of getting a call about a barricaded subject. In my almost 30 years, I've never really supervised or sat over one of those types of calls. I've seen a lot, but this was definitely something that, you know, it's one of those calls where you hear people, the hair on your neck starts raising, and it was that. But I can say, I just want to mention, when I pulled up, I got dressed and sped down to the scene. When I got there and I saw that show of force in terms of a perimeter setup started by my guys and the Peru guys initially, with the subject that had shot a gun out of a window in a neighborhood, it was unbelievable response. I got there and really, it was amazing how this situation just fell into place by itself. And unfortunately, the situation, it didn't end as sometimes they do, but sometimes they do end this way. But in the end, all of the good guys went home safe yesterday. I'm sure a lot of them were stressed out. I can speak volumes to that after that call. But I do want to make a mention really quick, because some department names and specific names themselves of some people that were there helping, helping me guide through this. We had to keep the subject on the phone for an hour and a half. I mean, talking, I can talk. My wife says I talk a lot, not for an hour and a half straight. Somebody had to bring me water yesterday. It was rough. But like I said, in the end, everybody went home safe, and I can't thank everybody enough. So I just want to make mention, first start off with my guys and girls. I'm so damn proud of everybody for how they responded along with Peru Police to this initial incident. Showing up on a call here, and I had some young fellows working with a guy shooting a gun out of a window, surely makes you think twice about things in life. It puts things into perspective. They secured a perimeter, made the calls to the proper people. I was one of the calls. They made calls, all call was put to a, it's called like a call-out to every agency in the area, respond, shots fired. So I would just want to start off with my guys and girls, very darn proud, Evo. Peru Police Department, I can't speak enough. We work hand in hand, we're right next to each other, and again, we are lucky how we share services like this. I just want to go on the record and say that. Ottawa Police Department sent somebody over there. The South County Sheriff's Department sent a whole unit over. The South County Tactical Response Team sent their team over along with a big bear cat, which was used for cover and distraction and all good things like that. Illinois State Police had several people. Illinois Conservation Police, Oglesby Police, the Bureau County Sheriff's Department, the Princeton Police, the Spring Valley Police, the Mendota Police, the Depew Police, LaSalle Fire and Emergency Service. My favorite fire chief over here was over here helping out a ton. And we also had the LaSalle Fire and Police drone out there, which actually, that drone And we also had the LaSalle Fire and Police Drone out there, which actually, that drone that we talked about, everybody, it was, it's unbelievable what we were able to accomplish with that drone. So, and then specifically, I just want to mention, I've got three good friends with the Sheriff's Department, and I want to put a shout out to them because I've, I've worked with them a long time in this career, and we're, one of them's retiring very soon here, actually by the end of the week. His name's Jason Martin. He's a good friend of mine, and he, I singled him out yesterday. He's seen a lot more of these situations than me. We work great together. Dave Ortiz, he was with me in the car when we were both in there trying to negotiate to get this guy to come outside, and Sheriff Adam Dis. He's got two guys there that he's very lucky, and he surrounded himself well. Huge shout out to Dean Teeman and Dave Van Lar and Aruka with, Stephen Christopherson with Aruka. They provided a service yesterday. Again, I've never encountered anything like this before. We, but we really, it worked out well. Everybody, we have our third floor remodeled now, and I was able to stage people here. We had interviews to conduct. The state police took the investigation over, and they needed rooms to interview people with, and we had Van Lar, Teeman, and Aruka were here for chaplain services to see if anybody needed help. So anybody wanted to talk to somebody, or if anybody just wanted to get something off their chest. You know, because I take these things sometimes for granted, been doing it long, but, you know, there's a lot of young people in this profession, not only in LaSalle, Peru. I look around, Oglesby, Bureau County, the Sheriff's Department. So these services were offered here yesterday. You know, everybody had, we had food brought in by the Red Cross. I want to give a shout out to them too. And, but I just want to tell everybody, you know, with the services that we have, we're very fortunate. It's a, it's a hell of a feeling when you pull up on a call like this and you see probably 50 police officers deep surrounding this area. And as the chief of this town, which I care gravely about, when I pull up and see that, that took a load of stress off my plate. I could finagle around, see what was going on, and then work with Jason Martin and Dave Ortiz and the sheriff, which ultimately, we have a resolution to it. Is it the way it was, you know, planned? No, but like I said, nothing really goes as planned, other than the fact that we all went home safe and nobody was hurt yesterday. So that's all I want to say and put a big shout out to everybody that I mentioned.
Chief, good job. Now I want to make a comment to you guys, and I heard too from another law enforcement person. I guess they asked our chief, did you have any classes on, you know, negotiating hostage situation? And he said, you know, chief said, no, this guy was just amazed that, you know, the way that chief talked to this person for an hour and a half and never really had any formal training, but I think that's just how chief is. He knows how to handle situations from experience, so. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Good job. Motion for Samon Reynolds, Samon Crane to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.